...with my horses that are no longer visible by people supervising them. That is a huge concern of us, of ours right now. And also remember that this was an equine property. This five acre block it took over was an equine property. The fencing was meant for horses. It's not meant for kids. I'm also concerned that we're looking at the most ideal situation every time with rosy eyes. Life is not ideal. Kids don't do everything they tell them to. Parents don't do everything they tell them to. It's not a situation that is overly controllable. The more kids you have, the less control you have over it. We bought the property more than 23 years ago and included their bridle path, which is a big minority that my kids use if they saw a picture of a dog riding. And it's the nature of children to be loud and playful and active. That's what they do at recess. That's on the other side of that brush. Loud noises, spook horses, horses are prey animals. Noises coming from areas that we can't see or expect can be very dangerous to the rider. If you can see the kids playing and you ride up to them, that's one thing. If you're riding along that prairie path and all of a sudden there's a big noise coming out of bushes, that is going to spook the horse and be a very dangerous situation for the riders. The prairie path on that whole side is no longer safe for my kids or others to ride. The other thing, man, you know, so there's normal risk to having a horse property. We have an insurance of a rental policy, but insurance company cover that. The problem is it's not set up to, it's not adequate for 20 to 40 children in the adjacent property to my horses 30 feet away. I would have to increase my insurance, I think, for more cost. But there's other risk mitigation possibly as well, which maybe some people might use cameras or other things. I need to protect myself. The problem I have is horses are considered an attractive nuisance, which is a legal term saying if a kid gets hurt on my property, no matter what, a bonehead or rules that may follow, I'm liable for it. And that's just the way it is. That is one of the rules. Are two things that we can't protect against. No matter what we do, if it gets hurt there, we're liable for those situations. And that's how it's held. It just materially changes our financial risk profile. And the reality is you just don't have horse properties next to schools. And it's not reasonable to put a school next to horse property. My value of my property is it's a horse property. It's an equine, an equine neighborhood. Having a school next door, I'm no longer a good equine in horse property. I'm not going to be able to sell it as an equine horse property to a great majority of people that would purchase that being next to the school. It's not a reasonable risk. You do not build a horse property next to a school, you don't put a school next to a horse property. It's just completely outside, completely outside of, the compatibility with our land. One thing that really disturbed me was in the write-up. James Brown broke off our concerns, saying they're greatly exaggerated. That was extremely offensive. I can assure that so many of you that these are valid concerns and real risks. What I don't understand is what his intention is to upset and insert his biased opinion into something that should be statements and you are concerns. Furthermore, he took the talking point of Headwaters. And then, no, it's voided any equine experience or concern in any of those statements. So the concerns when that took place, he did not reach out to us to ask us about the concerns. He's assuming that's generally greatly exaggerated. And other parts of the reports are just as, just the same. Other people will address different considerations and concerns. Now, what this property is, it's a commercial enterprise. It's selling education to the public and it's inviting the public into our community every day. We're talking about families that aren't in Campden Hills. We're talking about areas around, and most of them are talking about non, you know, the kids and the family community aren't farming people, they're not country people. They might like the country and the concept of it, but they're, they're not compatible with what we're doing. And again, it comes out to more risk for us. Also, we're all commercial, we're all residential properties that have been living room from the block. This property is not going to be lived in. They represent, they want to have live animals on the property. We don't have unattended animals in our neighborhoods where people will all come and go at night and they'll come back in the morning. That doesn't exist. That's not the relationship. Now, it could be that the house next door will take care of them. But there's, for those are suspicions that the adjacent property that they own wound up interacting with the school in a cohesive manner and not be a separate residential property. And that's another concern we have is, not that they're going to join them from an accounting perspective because they won't be allowed, but that doesn't mean they won't actually go ahead and marry the two together because it's similar ownership, parents and daughter. Also, you keep on saying that this property is a farm. It's not a farm. It doesn't produce any income or anything, it should be a definition farm. It's a word that makes it sound like it fits in the community. A lot of the things are words that make it sound like it fits into the community or they're consistent with stuff. It's a lot of words that don't exist today. This is a brand new enterprise that's unproven. It's flying by the seat of its pants. It doesn't look ahead. It's a school that doesn't do its homework. It doesn't research things. It just jumps forward. Oh, this sounds like a good idea, let's go do it. That's obviously not a responsible partner and neighbor in this situation, especially with so much going on in that area. And then, another thing too is, hardly believe that every property and neighbor, other than the owner and the owner's daughter, are against this. Whether it's across the street, whether it's a full neighborhood next to it, or a full neighborhood to the other side of it, there is no support for this in it, but yet it's supposed to be consistent with our neighborhood. Yet, all surrounding areas do not have anything similar to this. That part of it is true, the neighborhood as well. So I mean, then they were asking me, please say no. This isn't, this isn't just incompatible. It's actually goes in zed paths with the equine community, equine residents. The one property, sorry, that was an equine property. They've removed all equine from it. The school is an equine property. It's gone to no. So they're slowly knocking off all the horse properties in the sequestering neighborhood. And that's not good for anybody. That's not good for anything. And it's just consistent behavior of going down the other route that we don't want to go.
My name is Nancy Roxworthy.
I'm sorry Nancy, I interrupted you. Are you going to be using these forwards in front because it's black?
Somebody will be, the next person will be.
Well, they can't see, they can't see her though. Is that what you're saying? Yeah, so they can see her.
Well, see now, I am Nancy Roxworthy. I live on Farm G Road, so I've lived there for over 25 years. The back of my property is adjacent to the front side yards of the proposed special school. I'm directly to the east. I'm closest to the school. And I just wanted to kind of go over the impact of a new school on adjacent properties that are based on several different factors. Of course, any school in a neighborhood has potential positives. Proximity to a school can be attractive for families with children. However, this school is advertising to bring children from far outside the neighborhood and Campden Hills. In fact, both neighborhoods on either side of the school have signed petitions stating they don't want this school. There's no one from our neighborhood that's going there. You can have a positive enhanced community reputation. A well-regarded school can enhance the reputation of the neighborhood. However, in this case, the proponents of the school have done nothing to reach out to neighbors. The covenants and restrictions on this property are being ignored. And then, nearer school, you usually have some improved infrastructure. It can lead to new improvements on the roads, parks. But this school probably will demand some changes on Campden Hills Road. But are they improvements? Or changes just paid for by Campden Hills taxpayers? There are some potential negatives that have been brought up. The increased traffic and noise. We know there's going to be increased noise during drop-off and pickup times. And these facts have been brought up many times, so I'm not going to dwell on that. But personally, because I'm very close to their driveway, I will see every car, every car light from my backyard. The proposed school may put a fence. There's fencing on a lot of property, but there is no fence between my backyard and their, and their front. There's nothing to block, no landscape, no fence. And they might even propose a privacy fence. But then what'll that do? Then basically I have open land space that's lost through that. I mean, right now I can look through, you know, a wide spans of land. So either I see cars or they'll cut it off with, you know, some fence. And then what is the negative changes in the neighborhood's character and safety? Usually a school is planned, is part of a neighborhood. And people move to that area because they want to be close to the neighborhood. But this school is being dropped into a neighborhood. It's the reverse. It wasn't planned that way. The land surrounding this proposed school is residential. We have protection with covenants and restrictions that I know you don't want to deal with, but we certainly will, we need to. With this commercial venture in my backyard, the peaceful serenity of the community will be changed. I also feel that my personal safety is threatened by 20, 30 unknown cars next to my home every day. That's more cars than in our neighborhoods that they're bringing into one, one area. The previous owners of the proposed school were the best neighbors. We looked out for each other. That's what good neighbors in a residential area do. But no one will live in this school. No one's protecting the property like a true home. And then there is increased liability. I have an in-ground pool. And many homeowner policies require a thousand square feet distance between a pool and any commercial property or school. So that's something for future. In summary, the potential positives of the school have been turned into.
Hi, my name is Holly Boron. I live on Foxfield Drive. I'm slightly just outside of the notice area, approximately 400 feet from this property. And I wasn't going to speak tonight, but now I am. So I am for this school because I would like to send my child here, and I'm a local resident. I know there's a lot of people here already in this community, just based on me going live tonight, that are speaking out about how in support they would be and how they didn't even know this was an option for their local children. So the scare tactic, we're hearing a lot of scare tactics. The scare tactic about outsiders driving down their cul-de-sac. You know, all these foreign peoples that don't belong to Campden Hills. That is not why I moved to Campden Hills. When I was deputy clerk here, I was sent with village money to the Illinois Municipal League Conference. I sat through a talk regarding NIMBY complaints. And for the average layman, you may not know what NIMBY means, but it stands for not in my backyard. So you would be fine with a lot of these things if it wasn't in your backyard. So the talk that I sat through and I took extensive notes was basically how, when you're sitting at a plan commission, to distinguish between what is a irrational NIMBY complaint and/or fear and, and what are the factors here. So I want to remind this commission to go back and remember what the actual factors are. I'm a little emotional about this and I didn't expect that. I kind of already knew what to expect, but I'm just shocked that a portion of this community would be so close-minded to something that could be so spectacular for us. We already have the farmhouse school. I already mentioned this in a prior hearing. There are no sprinkler systems there. A lot of the things that they're putting on this school don't exist for a prior special use or variance. I think it was a variance specifically, but they're extremely similar, as you know. Yes, so as a resident, I want my eight-year-old to go here at some point. I'm just not ready for it just yet. I'm still homeschooling. I know there's a lot of other parents willing to send their children here. We just didn't know that it was going to be right here in our backyard. And as far as, I do want to touch on the children polluting milk cream because it drives me crazy. So I am not afraid of children's urine. I mean, how many times when you were in school did you poop at school? Think about it. How many times? One time Thursday, you know, two times a week. So children's poop or urine doesn't scare me. They're not doing laundry with harmful chemicals. How many people in this room are spraying pesticides on their lawn? That is the true, the true problem. What, you know, I sat through a lot of people talking and now I'm talking. So what are you putting in your laundry detergent? You know, what kind of pharmaceuticals are you putting on? I'm not on any, in my field. Okay, so that's, you want to bring up pharmaceuticals? Zero in my home.
Hey, point of order.
There are no more comments, smackdowns.
I'm sorry that I'm touching hot buttons for everybody. I'm very sorry. But I think all of this needs to be said and strongly because it's irrational thinking. I'm also sorry that I'm recording this. I'm the reason, by the way, everybody, all the residents here. I'm the reason that the village now records every meeting. Because I took a year and a half of my time in my life and I sat here with my damn camera and I recorded everything and put pressure on the village and they finally do this for you. So now you can sit at your home and watch the village meetings. So I just, again, to remind board, you have certain factors to consider and it's none of this noise.
Keep in mind, everybody, I understand it can be emotional and stuff, but please no outbursts from the group, no matter what side of the aisle you're on, okay? And I encourage you to speak. I want, we want to hear what the concerns are. So, next person, please.
Hello, I'm Dee McDuckie and I live on Country D Lane. First of all, I want to thank you for listening to us once more. I know it was a long procedure last time and here we are again. But that just goes to show you the passion of our area and how much we love the residential area that we're, we live in. So I want to start off just kind of coming full circle from the first meeting that was on June 18th. So I know a bunch of the staff is here. And I know Sarah clearly is from Campden Hills. But besides Sarah, and I know now you, Ms., how many of you are from Campden Hills? The staff? You live in Campden Hills? So one, other. I've lived here for decades, as well as most of my neighbors. If you live here, you realize why we live here, what our values are, and how this school can impact our beautiful residential community. You mentioned your proposed school. Basically, that's comparing apples to oranges. The farmhouse school is an historical property that has many buildings on it from the 1800s. It is actually on the King County Historical Register. So comparing that property, which is, was in place before the Fox Hill subdivision was there. So basically subdivision was after that property. Unlike the orange, the Montessori school, where we're residential and they're trying to change a residential long-time home that was built in a residential area to a school. That's a completely different apple and orange. I know Mr. Brown, you stated in your memo dated on July 24th, just recently, your own personal example about Fearsome Creek Elementary School. This public school building also has no homes directly next to it, very much like the farmhouse school. It was built to service a geographical area in St. Charles, much like the Belgrum Elementary School in the Fox Hill subdivision in St. Charles. Again, you're comparing apples to oranges.
Part of the Fox Hill.
The proposed Montessori school property has always been residential and is surrounded by residential properties. I know there's been a lot of talk about traffic, but I'm going to just kind of pick through what I had written down. We talked about drop-off and pickup times. I mean, this might sound great on paper in this beautiful presentation, but the fact of the matter is, is I don't know any parents or children that don't run late. Kids that don't get sick and have to be picked up early in the middle of the day, multiple times a day. Also remember, the public school buses run and have lots of stops on Campden Hills Road, multiple times a day, as well as frequent joggers, walkers, bicycle clubs that travel in groups, farm equipment, rain semis, which would clearly delay the perfect process on paper for drop-off and pickup. We do live in the Midwest. Let's not forget the many rain and snow storms we have in our area causing power outages. A big question would be, your proposed property is unwell and septic. Are you going to have a whole house generator for the safety of the children and the staff? Falling trees, electrical wires, delayed snow removal would all disrupt the perfect process of dropping off and picking up on paper. I think they are clearly underestimating the amount of traffic that will come and going and the timing of such traffic. And I do have a question for you, sir. When did you do this traffic study? So you did it this week? You did the evaluation this week? So the numbers that you came up with were purely from this week?
We did not perform a full traffic study. It was just a, you know, a preliminary evaluation, right? The numbers we have, we gave for truck generations are based on instituted transportation engineers numbers for, that they get from countless surveys. They were surveyed across the entire range of other private schools. That's where the numbers we presented are from. The only other number we had was the 600 people a day. And that is an IDOT providing number for Campden Hills Road.
Okay, so basically there's been no official traffic study to tell exactly how many cars travel on that. And at this time of the year, there are less cars trap, traffic on that road due to people on vacations not going many places. The kids aren't in school. They're not coming back and forth to their activities. So to estimate a number in an area of which clearly I'm assuming, sir, you're not from the area either, Mr. Lawyer, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, to know what actually the traffic volume is on any specific given day, correct? It's an estimate that, that you've given us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, we were talking about the driveway. In the, in the last June 18th meeting, Sarah stated on record that the asphalt people who did her extension turnaround, which is not a circle, it's a half arc, by the way, was specifically two-car. It is not a two-car. It's a one-car. In front, it tapers down out to a two-plus car in front of the garage only. Other than that, it's very narrow everywhere else leading up into the front of the garage. Therefore, it has no capacity to have a car coming in and out of the driveway. Cars could be sitting on Campden Hills Road waiting to enter and exit. Again, it's a 50 mile an hour road. That's a huge safety concern. And I actually have a question that came up when I read Mr. Brown here memo, again dated July 24th. The approximate number of people and children you have written in your document that would be coming in and out of the driveway on the proposed school, but you never stated anything more about how many people would be coming in and out of the property for the community garden and the special events? That's also written there and has not been taken into consideration. On the 18th, Sarah said that they were specifically going to have a school for the kids and no events. And now all of a sudden, I see a community garden and special events that maybe would occur only so many times a week or a month or whatnot. So again, more traffic, more safety concerns, especially on a 50 mile an hour road. So I would hope that everyone would say that they do not want this now. And I appreciate the time. Thank you.
My name is Vince Kelly. I live at 4M150 Farm G Road. I have a, well, I'm just going to read my speech. I know you already brought this up, but I feel this is important to be heard again, so. My name is Vince Kelly and I live at 4M150 Farm G Road with my wife and kids. My parents built this house in 1978 after purchasing 15 acres of land with my mom's two sisters. I was born and raised in this home and have basically lived there my entire life. This issue is very important to myself and neighbors and it concerns, as it concerns the preservation of our neighborhood, as a small uninhabited rural community. While we are not questioning the validity, need, or importance of Headwaters Academy, we're definitely questioning the location choice as it's not legal for the property to be used as a school based on the covenants and restrictions attached to title and land. I know everyone here is aware of this because I've emailed you all the information. But my home, our neighbors' homes are all part of Campden Hills Farm Subdivision and is bound by covenants and restrictions as to how the properties are to be maintained and used. You keep mentioning HOA, but these covenants and restrictions are not HOA rules. They're legal documents that were recorded with King County on June 12th, 1972. And can be found under King County Document Number 1229233, Book Number 2762, Pages 239 through 245, as shown on the attachments that I have forwarded to everyone here. The covenants are attached to the title by the warranty deed when purchasing a property in this neighborhood. They run with the land, not the owner of the land or the village of. They run with the land, not the owner of the land or the village or the corporation, and can only be changed by a vote with at least two-thirds of the aggregate landowners. These documents have already been enforced in a court of law in King County as well. King County case number zero-four C H four-one-four, Robert and Denise Clark, and Paolo and Kerry Castellano. The court ordered rendered on eight-twenty-four oh four, ruled on the covenants and restrictions in favor of the plaintiffs, and the court retained jurisdiction of enforcement until compliance was rendered. The owners of Headwaters Academy admitted that they were given a copy of the covenants and restrictions when they purchased the property. In the warranty deed that they signed when purchasing, purchasing the property, it specifically states that the deed is subject to general real estate taxes not due and payable at the time of closing, covenants, conditions, and restrictions of record, and building lines of use. I'd also like to take a quick minute to read the most applicable rules from the covenants and restrictions that are in place on this piece of property. Rule number one. No track nor any structure located thereon shall be used for any business or commercial purpose except farming or in such a manner as to cause nauseous odors or create annoyance or nuisance. Rule number eleven A. No structure whatever, except structures pertinent to farming use, shall be erected, placed, or permitted on any track except one private residence to be used only for occupancy as a dwelling by one family only with the necessary customary outlines of pertinent thereto. Rule number fourteen. The covenants and restrictions set forth herein with the exceptions herein stated are for the benefit of all present and future owners of tracks in said subdivision. Declaring and each party who accepts title to any part of said subdivision binds himself, his heirs, legal representatives, successors, and assigns to the covenants and restrictions and every other provision herein contained. It is understood and agreed that all the covenants and restrictions shall run with the land and shall bind and endure to the benefit of declaring and all parties requiring an interest in said subdivision. The respective heirs, successors, and assigns. So based on the aforementioned rules, it's clear that a school is not, absolutely not allowed in this location. Again, I emailed all of you guys on Thursday with these documents so you had time to review and verify these facts. Therefore, it makes no sense to approve a special use permit for the property when there are superseding documents that do not allow the land to be used for such a purpose. And I'd like to make an additional point regarding that statement. During the latest Hampton Hills rezoning and land use amendment process over the last couple of years, I heard multiple times in the meetings from village officials that if your property contains covenants that strictly allow the use of something or not the use of something, whether it be keeping of animals or something else, the covenants would take precedence over the village zoning ordinance. So I did a little research on this and I found a village zoning ordinance that clearly states this fact. Hampton Hills ordinance number zero-two-zero dash one-three, which is an ordinance amending chapter five, title nine, subdivision regulations of the Village Code of Hampton Hills, King County, Illinois. In Article one, Title applicability and interpretation, the title says this chapter is known, cited, and referred to as subdivision ordinance, subdivision regulations, or regulations of the Village of Hampton Hills. Most importantly, in Article one-two-point-three, which is the interpretation, it states, "In interpreting and applying of these regulations, they are held to be the minimum requirements for the promotion and effectuation of the purposes set forth herein. Where these regulations impose greater restrictions or requirements than one imposed or required by other provisions of laws, rules, regulations, covenants, or agreements, these regulations control. Where any easements, covenants, deed restrictions, or agreements between parties impose restrictions greater than those imposed by this chapter, those easements, covenants, deed restrictions, or agreements will control." Now at the end, it does say, "However, the village will not enforce any private easements, covenants, deed restrictions, or agreements." So, now, based on this interpretation, which comes directly from the village ordinance, it's very apparent that the obvious decision in this case is to deny the special use permit for Headwaters Academy. I do underspore, I do understand that the village states that won't enforce these covenants or agreements. However, I would argue at this point, it's not requiring any actual enforcement, which is a common sense decision to deny the special use permit for Headwaters as it is specifically not allowed based on covenants and land restrictions attached to this piece of property. In fact, I would almost argue that approval would be a wrongful vote to purposely break the covenants by this commission. Finally, I know your vote is supposed to be based on three factors. I'm specifically going to point to number two, that states the proposed special use is compatible with the general land use of adjacent properties and other property within the immediate vicinity. This fact is completely untrue for Headwaters Academy. Emphasize again that every parcel within the subdivision is either farmland or only occupied by a single family and a single-family residence. This is fact because that's all the covenants allow. Therefore, a special use permit is absolutely not compatible with adjacent properties as the school has stated that no one will occupy the house as residents. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter, and I look forward to satisfactory resolution to this situation.